So can I have a motion for, we have, our clerk is not here this evening.
Madam Supervisor, I move that we appoint Treasurer Slavens as temporary clerk.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Borninski, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes. Treasurer Slavens, can we please have a roll call?
Absolutely. Trustee Borninski.
Here.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly. Our supervisor Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Clerk Seegrist. Treasurer Slavens is here. Good evening. And Trustee Snyderman is not here. Okay.
Great. So we have a quorum. Yes, it all, it's all women up here. Just to remind everybody, International Women's Month, we did this. Alright, great. So we will first start with retirement recognitions. So I would like to call up, we'll do that one at a time. We'll start with Colin Duty. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. That was not, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone please rise. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. Why don't we approve the agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we approve the agenda with one change, putting the retirement recognition ahead of the closed session.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Alright, we're going to start with retirement recognitions. We're sorry to see people go, but it's a great time in life for many. So we'll start with Colin Duty. Colin Duty began his employment with Canton Township in 1989, where he completed 33 years of full-time devoted service to the Canton community. Whereas Colin has always displayed excellence and dedication in his various roles throughout his tenure with Canton, spending his first 15 years as a mechanic for the municipal services department, then becoming a parks laborer in 2004. And whereas Colin's knowledge and experiences in all the trades has benefited the township in numerous ways, handling many of the parks' complex projects, as well as assisting with maintaining Canton's many playgrounds. And whereas Colin's commitment and loyalty to his job, coworkers in the Canton community are great examples for future employees to follow. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize and extend its appreciation to Colin Duty for 33 years of dedication and commitment to the Canton community, and wishes him a happy and healthy retirement. Colin is not, so Greg is going to take this. We're going to take pictures after, so that's for Colin, so I'm just going to give Colin a good clap.
So I'm going to accept this on his behalf and present to him at a staff meeting that we have coming in the new year.
Next we have Greg King. Greg King started working for Canton Township in 1998 and has demonstrated an unending loyalty to the job and community throughout his 24 years. Whereas Greg has always displayed excellence and dedication in his various roles throughout his tenure with Canton, working his way up from a laborer in 1998 to ultimately becoming the facility supervisor in 2010. And whereas during his role as facility supervisor, Greg has worked diligently to deliver the best facilities in Canton Township, overseeing staff to provide maintenance, cleanliness and safety throughout the seven Canton-owned buildings. And whereas in addition to providing facility maintenance, Greg played a vital role in numerous improvements and developments throughout the township, such as fulfilling ADA requirements, as well as completing a variety of projects within Canton's capital improvement plan. And whereas Greg's passion for history landed him a position on the Historic District Commission, where he partnered with the Canton Historical Society to create the highly-attended Brew, Rotz and Bands at the Barn, or the B4 event, as a fundraiser for the historical society that is now in its 12th successful year. And whereas Greg's commitment and dedication to his jobs, coworkers in the Canton community are great examples for future employees to follow. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize and extends its appreciation to Greg King for his 24 years at Canton Township and commendable contribution to the Canton community, and wishes him a happy and healthy retirement. Greg? We're going to take pictures of all of you at the end, so come on up, Greg. You've got this to you right now. Get ready for a picture.
Does he want to say anything?
Greg, do you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Oh, come on.
I'm good.
Paula Cosby. Whereas Paula Cosby has completed nine years of part-time and 16 years of full-time, totaling 25 years of service to the Canton community. And whereas Paula has always displayed excellence and dedication in her various roles throughout her tenure with Canton, she worked her way up starting as a continuing part-time employee in 1997, to being promoted to a full-time employee working as an accounting clerk for finance and budget in 2006. And whereas in 2007, Paula took the role of volunteer coordinator, where she worked diligently to secure thousands of volunteer hours each year, making township programs and events not only possible, but successful. And whereas Paula's commitment as a leisure services volunteer coordinator has made Canton a better place for residents and visitors to enjoy all of the benefits leisure services has to offer. She's played a vital role in providing outstanding customer service, as well as significant support in serving the residents of Canton. Whereas Paula's ability to grow and build relationships with Canton's finest volunteers, commitment and loyalty to her job, coworkers in the Canton community are great examples for future employees to follow. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize and extends its appreciation to Paula Cosby for 25 years of dedication and commitment to the Canton community, and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement. Paula? Greg and Greg. You can say a few words, yes.
I would just like to thank the Board of Trustees tonight for this recognition. My time with Canton has been a great journey. When I started in 1997 as a part-time employee, there was no leisure services. At that time, my boss, Deputy Director John LaFever, was a building attendant at the Summit on the Park. A few years later, Director Greg Hohenberger was hired as the Aquatics Center Supervisor. We have come a long way. It just goes to show you, once you start working for Canton, there are so many opportunities that you just don't leave until you retire. It has been a pleasure working with so many wonderful people during the past 25 years. I appreciate the support that I've received from Greg and John and my coworkers. I'm especially grateful that I was given the opportunity to oversee Canton's volunteers. What an amazing group of individuals who support the Canton community. They always come through. Thank you again. It's quite an honor and I will treasure my time here. Thank you.
This isn't the end. There will be celebrations for these people at each, I think their groups are setting up parties, so more pictures will be taken. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda are the closed session.
Madam Supervisor, I move to go into closed session under Section 8C and 8E of the Open Meeting Act for a purpose of strategy connected with negotiations of collective bargaining agreement and legal consultation regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation Hunter versus Canton.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. Can you please take roll call to go into closed session?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Aye.
Slavens, aye.
Great, and we will be right back when we are done.
Madam Supervisor, I make the motion that we go, uh, we move from closed session to open session.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we're out of closed session. And the next item on the agenda is kind of a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Madam Supervisor, I make the motion that we approve the minutes.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, minutes from February twenty-second are approved. Um, the next item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only? No, let me look on the attendees online. Anyone want to give public comment on agenda items only? Public comment, we also have a public comment at the end, but this is for agenda items only. I don't see any online or in the room for agenda items only. Okay. Thank you. Now can I have a motion to move into public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, motion, uh, support please?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes to pay the bills. Can I have a motion to move into public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-two sidewalk repair program?
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing. Sorry about that. Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs pursuant to the township sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act eighty of the Public Acts of nineteen eighty-nine.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Borninski to move into public hearing. Um, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Trustee Borninski.
Aye.
Trustee Foster.
Aye.
Supervisor Graham Hudek.
Aye.
And Treasurer Slavin's aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving into public hearing to consider the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-two sidewalk repair program. Um, do we have any residents that would like to speak? Come to the podium. Anyone in the room?
I have questions, is what I wanted to hear.
Is this for the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, um, you can come up and ask any questions you'd like.
Okay.
Please state your name and your question.
Dr. Vazoya.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Uh, Jack Steffen, Doubletree Road in the Sunflower subdivision. So our sidewalk definitely is in need of repair. It's like a jump ramp. And the question is, well, the, the reason for the sidewalk buckling is because of the tree roots that have eventually, over the years, caused the sidewalk to do this. So it's been so bad on the tree lawn that over the last two years, I have not even been able to cut the grass with the lawnmower because the tree roots are five, six inches high off the ground. So you can't run a lawnmower over the tree roots because you, you know, you killed your lawnmower. So my question is, if you replace the sidewalk, what happens with the tree roots? Do the tree roots, does someone come and cut, I mean, who owns the tree on the tree lawn?
Did you have a presentation Jade, or did you do the presentation first?
Yeah, and then we do have some, uh, employees here from engineering that can answer those questions directly for you too. And if needed, we can come out on site and take a look as well.
Because my, my concern is, okay, I don't, I don't have an issue paying the money for the sidewalk. But if we're going to cut the roots back, and in two or three years, the same issue's going to happen again. The roots are going to grow, the sidewalk's going to do this, and here we go again. It's, it's a bandage on the problem. So that's my big question is, can, really, the, the solution is the tree's got to go. But I don't think I own the tree. I think the city owns the tree.
Yeah, and actually, it, it's a, it's kind of a complex issue because actually, if it's in the right of way, it's the county tree. So there's another entity that gets involved. But we have, we do have, um, these kinds of concerns that are brought up every year. And we've got Erica and Matt right here from engineering. Um, sorry, I'm pointing in the, in the row here. But they'll be able to, to get down your address and then actually come take a look at the tree.
I mean, you come up and down Doubletree, it's, it's everybody. So it's, you know, and I'm surprised someone hasn't tripped and fallen and I've gotten sued already because it's really bad.
Right, yeah. So we'll come out and take a look. Um, so, and every, every situation's a little bit different too, depending on the severity and the size of the tree and how bad the damage is actually on the sidewalk. So they'll come out and take a look.
Yeah, I'm curious to see when, when the actual slab is lifted up, what looks like, I can imagine what it looks like underneath. It's probably like Godzilla or, or, you know, just crazy.
Right.
These tree roots everywhere. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to show or just take questions?
We can take questions, or I have some things prepared that kind of go through the sidewalk program and gives the history of it, talks about some of the needed repairs and, um, how the process actually works. If you want me to go through that?
Sure.
Okay, I just need to share my screen.
You should be able to now.
Okay. Obviously, we're here talking about the sidewalk program for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, just to give a little history on the sidewalk program, it was implemented back in nineteen ninety-nine to reduce our liability from injury and claims, and then also to improve the appearance of the community. Uh, what generated this was back in nineteen ninety-seven, Canton Township was actually part of a lawsuit, and the Michigan Supreme Court actually found the townships are responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks within the public right of way. Uh, we do have an ordinance on the sidewalk repair program. Um, I've got that listed here on the screen. And just so everybody knows too, this presentation is actually on our website too, under the engineering department. There is a section for the sidewalk repair program which has all this information listed. Uh, the program began with the inspection of the oldest subdivisions first. Uh, the subdivisions have been consolidated by area, and the program actually is covered in a twelve-year span. So we make our way through the township, through all of the different areas on a twelve-year cycle. Uh, concerns about the program are typically handled through the engineering department, and we do have representatives of the engineering department here tonight. We have Matt, Erica, and Cheryl. So if there's any questions, um, specifically about your property that may not get covered in this presentation, or we don't have the answer, they may need to come on, onsite, they'll be in the hallway after this as well to answer any questions that, that do come up. This year, we are targeting on Zone Seven, which is north of Cherry Hill, west of Sheldon, east of Beck, and south of Ford. Uh, this is a snippet of the map that's actually also on the sidewalk repair program page on the website. Uh, and you can see it here that there's the subdivisions that are included in this year's rotation. Um, there's three different types of sidewalk repair activities, warranty work, current construction repair, and then future markings and repairs for future years in the sidewalk program. So we'll be looking this year at two thousand and twenty-three's, um, preparing that for next year. The sidewalk inspection for the following year's targeted zone is advertised in the paper and also is shown on the website. Uh, if you do see markings on the sidewalks, there's two colors. One is red and one is green. Uh, red dots indicate that there is going to be a repair made, but that is actually the township's responsibility. And then green would actually indicate that the responsibility falls on the property owner that's adjacent to the sidewalk. The sidewalk repair program also falls in line with the most recent Board of Trustees Strategic Plan of Quality Infrastructure to provide an environment that enhances the mental, physical health and safety of our community with exceptional services and capital improvements. And just to let everybody know too, at home, that the strategic plan is available on the website as well. These are just some examples of repairs that are needed that are seen commonly throughout the community. We have sidewalk displacement, spalling sidewalk, which you can kind of see the, the cement is just, is scaling, um, in that, in that picture on the right. Uh, we have spider cracking and then traditional large cracks that you see within, um, the, the slabs on the right as well. Uh, ponding of water, uh, back switch or slope issues, uh, utility repairs, and then township-owned utility, um, repairs as well. We also do work around the storm sewer of manholes that are owned by Wayne County. And you can see, it's kind of hard to see on these, uh, monitors in here, but you can see that the two, uh, fl- slabs adjacent to the, to the manhole is actually in red. So the township would be taking care of those. The green ones that are, um, next to those though would fall on the responsibility of the property owner. And then there's ADA compliance that's, um, conducted throughout the township where, in those areas. When looking at common park areas and medians that are in homeowners associations, anything that abuts the sidewalk that is a common area is actually assessed to the homeowners association itself, not just one particular property owner. And that does include compliance with ADA accessibility issues. Uh, we also look for the safe condition of driveway approaches because that needs to be maintained by the property owner as well. To just talk about the public notification, um, this was publicly, um, advertised on February seventeenth and on March third. And then we did have letters that went out to all of the, uh, affected property owners that went out in February with tonight's date about the responsibility, the contractor, and the estimated, uh, and then some other construction information. After receiving the letter, a property owner has sixty days from the public hearing, so sixty days from tonight, uh, to do one of the following. One is to replace the sidewalks marked with the green dots, um, to meet Canton's standards. And they can work with the engineering department on that. Or they can do nothing at all, and Canton will come in with our, uh, approved contractor and complete the work, um, later on this summer. Those, that work had started in June. Speaking of construction, Zone, like I said, Zone Seven will begin around June first. We'll start some miscellaneous areas throughout the township in May, and the, always, we anticipate the completion of the construction by the end of July. This is all pending weather, um, so the weather can, can play a factor in these timelines. So these are definitely tentative timelines, but that's when we target to get our work completed. And I know that was really quick, but that was a real quick overview of the sidewalk program. And again, that information is located on our website. And, um, I think at this point, if there's any questions, um, Madam Supervisor, they can come to the podium and ask, and we can answer them here. Or if it's really detailed, we can, Erica and Matt and Cheryl can meet them in the hallway.
Any other questions from the audience? No? So you can actually speak to Erica or Cheryl or Matt here after the meeting or, or after this, um, agenda item and get some, get some information. Let me see if we have any online. Oh, I do have somebody online. Okay, we have a Chris Carlyle online. If you would like to ask your question? Chris, are you on, can you hear me? Chris, I have you. You raised your hand. Did you have a question about the sidewalk hearing? Okay, I don't know if they walked away. Chris? Okay, Chris, um, if you have any questions about the sidewalk hearing, I don't know if you're having trouble talking right now, but you can also call us tomorrow and we can get you in touch with our engineers that can assist you. Again, I'll ask you, do you have any, any other hands? I don't see any other hands up. Oh, panelist. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Uh, yes, hello, Board of Trustees. My name is Michael Seegrist. I live at two four five Princess Drive, uh, in Canton, Michigan. I'm not in any of the zones in question this evening, but my neighborhood was in the zone a few years ago. And I have to tell you, um, once the program had gone through our zone, the neighborhood, um, was in excellent shape. Uh, it did, it did increase my homeowner's dues by five dollars for one year. So I'm, I was a little bit upset about that. Uh, and then it did impact, um, my own, my own personal budget, um, as well. But I got to tell you, uh, the work was done fantastically. I think it's a great program. Um, it, it, it definitely promotes accessibility in the community and helps eliminate, um, civil liability to both the homeowner and the township. Um, I do know it's, it's, it tends to be a hot button, hot button issue. I know this meeting tends to be a little bit of a hot button or a hot, hot meeting as well. Um, but I got to tell you, um, I think the program is very important. And so I'm speaking in favor of the program. And I also think that Erica Hidalgo, who is the engineer, um, who is responsible for it, um, deserves, um, a medal, uh, for what she goes through from start to finish for this program. So Erica, if you can hear me, you are amazing. Um, and, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, and attendees, I do not see any hands raised. Oh, okay, yeah.
Hi, uh, my name is Nina Duan. I live in Combonstone, number one, two, seven, six, hundred drive. Actually, we live there since two thousand. That is the, uh, building was, uh, constructed in the two thousand. Uh, actually, our sidewalk right now actually no crack and no difference level, all the same level. But the last year, that is all our sidewalk was marked the green. They asked, they said that is our slope is a little more than required. But actually, my question is because we live there since we moved in, that is, we didn't observe any change that slope because that's new construction that time. So I think that this driveways should be passed that inspection, that sideways should be passed the inspection. But I don't know when that city's code is changed. They said our sideways not satisfied requirement and need repaired.
You're saying it's new construction and you're?
And no, that's two thousands, the new construction. We live there. Actually, sideways, no, we didn't observe any change. That is since we moved in, that's keep that is the condition. But right now, that is our hose weight. They said that's our slope, that is the, this, suppose this is the house, that's slowly, here has a little, they said this slope is, uh, too deep than required. Actually, since we move in, that's the new construction is keep that level. We just want, you know, when that is called is changed. Because then I think that the city should have the inspection due to that sidewalk was new build.
So would you, maybe you can speak to one about, to either Matt or Erica or Cheryl about that? Give your address and they can go take a look at it.
Okay.
The three people right here in the front, second row.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
I live in same address, that's my wife. But I have another question. I just noticed, uh, most of pathway just have slope, slope. So you need to change it. But actually, if you want to serve people and make people feel good, that can be left. Very easy, just why you have to broken and replace it. And I heard that. I called here and asked them, uh, why do this way? They said, oh, you can do it by yourself. But if a city wanted to do it, why don't just negotiate with the contract to do, left it, very simple, from resource, from cost, that will be benefit for everybody. I can't understand that. Why you just responsible broken and don't lift it. For other parties, some broken, of course, I agree to just change it.
So they can speak to that, but I, I don't know if you want to speak to that Jade about lifting versus replacing?
Yeah, um, the, the township's never done a lifting program, um, with the sound, with the sidewalks when they've been sloping like that. Um, if there's some sloping, then, um, there needs to be something corrected underground. Uh, but I think Erica can probably better, better address that onsite. Um, I don't, I don't actually have a, a good answer for you today this evening.
Okay, so they can take a look at it and Erica can tell you the past practices. Okay.
And save people the money.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So Erica can go out, Erica or Matt can go out to your house. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and I don't see any.
Anne Murray, can I just interject real quick? So I think, looks like someone may have had some issues online, but if anyone wants to call the engineering department, the number is actually on the letter that they would have received at home, or it's 394-5150 if anyone has any questions and couldn't get through on the Zoom call this evening.
Thank you, Jade. I don't see anyone else raising their hand. Okay, great. Any comments, questions? None? I don't see any. One, two, three, no more comments? Okay, great. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close a public hearing after hearing the comments of the necessity of sidewalk repairs to the Township Sidewalk Ordinance Sidewalk Repair Program Policy and as provided in the Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion two passes. Okay, and is there any comments from the board at all, or questions? Can I have motion three?
I just want to quickly say, Erica, we really appreciate all you do. I know there's always a lot of questions, and once a resident talks to you, you really calm them down and educate them on why the repairs need to be done. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, thank you. Erica and Matt, and Cheryl. Kate?
I echo what Treasurer Slavin said. Thank you, Erica. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Matt. I'm just wondering if someone wanted to allow the township to take care of the sidewalk issue for them, then how do they go about paying for that? Can they pay for it on, like, do they get billed from the township, or?
I'm Erica Hidalgo from the Engineering Department with Canton. Residents that, when we do the work, the bill is sent while after the work's been done, usually in the fall or winter of the year. The treasurer determines the due date of that bill, and anybody that's not able to pay the amount of the bill when it's due, it gets rolled onto the taxes with interest on their property tax.
And is there any kind of payment program?
No, we don't, we don't have a payment program, but what we tell homeowners and owners that receive the bill is that if they want to track how much they pay, if they want to pay it monthly until the actual due date, they can do that. We just don't send out subsequent bills or track that. Usually, they get the one bill, and then whatever balance is remaining, that gets rolled onto their taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Nope. Okay, motion, do we have a motion, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the attached resolution requiring replacement of sidewalks in Cherry Noel Estate, number one, Cherry Noel Estate, number two, Cobblestone Ridge, number one, Cobblestone Ridge, number two, Cobblestone Ridge, number three, Cobblestone Ridge, number four, Embassy Square, Fellow's Creek, Grand Oak, Meadow Brook, number one, Meadow Brook, number two, Savannah Point, and miscellaneous locations as indicated on the attached list in the published, that was published in the Canton Eagle on February 17th, 2022, and March 3rd, 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pass the consent calendar. C1, consider second reading of an amendment to the Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance regarding MCPT Michigan Avenue LLC rezoning. Consider, C2, consider approval of the resolution for the three annual permits and authorizing the Township Clerk signature for the work within the Wayne County right-of-way during 2022. C3, consider approval of the purchase of two dump trucks for the Water and Sewer Department and associated budget amendment to the 22 Water and Sewer Budget. C4, consider approving Amerit Commission recommendation for a position reclassification in leisure service, and C5, request the resolution of local body of government to recognize Canton Command Officer Association as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for charitable gaming license to the Bureau of State Lottery.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor passing the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Consent calendar passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the general calendar. Item one, consider approval of Greenland and SAG Plan Development District.
Madam Supervisor, approval of the Minor Plan Development District for Greenland and Sage, whereas a project sponsor has requested approval of Plan Development District for Greenland and Sage on property located at the southwest corner of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the planned development plan and plan development agreement and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of request with conditions as it meets the criteria for a plan development, results in definite benefits to the community, and complies with the applicable site design requirement of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of Chartered Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve Greenland and Sage Plan Development District on the tax parcel listed in our packet at 49491 Cherry Hill Road as proposed in the Plan Development Agreement and the Plan Documents, subject to the following conditions. One, revising the plan to address the zoning ordinance compliance items noted by staff, including light fixtures, compactor gate height, and directional arrows. Two, prohibiting the left turn onto Denton from the site and directing this market traffic to exit via Market Square Drive. And three, acceptance of the traffic impact study findings, conclusions, and proposed improvements by Wayne County.
Support, please.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. The applicant proposes to build a grocery store and bakery on a 1.59 acre parcel located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. The building is proposed to be 19,044 square feet, though there may be some adjustments to the second floor mezzanine area prior to site plan review. There are two entrances proposed, one entrance from the Market Square Drive to the west, and one entrance from Denton Road to the east. The entrance from Market Square Drive will align with Lantern Way, and there's no proposed extension of Market Square Drive. The entrance from Denton Road is located on the south side of the site and is designed to be as far away from the intersection of Cherry Hill Road as possible. The site is located in the village edge of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, and the underlying zoning district is RA Rural Agricultural. Section 6.09B2 of the zoning ordinance states that the Cherry Hill Village Design Guidelines are the applicable development standards which are made part of the zoning ordinance. Although the original agreement for Cherry Hill Village expired in 2014, the site is still subject to the standards of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District and Section 6.09 of the zoning ordinance. The Cherry Hill Village Overlay District requires all projects to be treated as a planned development. Each planned development district is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community, and the definite benefits of the site include architectural design and outdoor dining amenities. At its meeting on February 7, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PDD amendment subject to conditions. If the PDD is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit a site plan application, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. Jade, do you have anything to add?
No, not too much to add, other than I think this is going to be a nice compliment to Cherry Hill Village out there, and I do believe the petitioners here, if there were any questions for them, and Patrick is on the call, the Zoom call.
Thank you. Summer, do you have anything to add from the Planning Commission?
Not really. I agree with Director Smith. I'm very excited about bringing this project to Cherry Hill Village, but I will say in the Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of concern about increased traffic at the corner of Denton and Cherry Hill, and so I know that the Planning Department is planning to have conversations with Wayne County about that, so look forward to hearing how that goes.
Okay, did the petitioners want to ask, give any statements or anything, or talk about it a little bit?
Good evening. My name is Nezem Samoa. I am the architect for this project. My address is 6 Park Lane Boulevard, Dearborn, Michigan. I, just maybe to follow up on the last comment that, so Steve Foster indicated regarding the increased traffic, there was a discussion at the Planning Commission regarding the county involvement in that, and we did reach out to the county traffic department, and we're waiting for their feedback. Besides that, this proposal has been going back and forth for over a year now, and we think we're very close, and we would like to move ahead as fast as we can.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, I think a lot of people are looking excited for this. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. You too. Item G2, consider award of a contract to Al's Asphalt Paving for paving the three parking lots in Heritage Park, and an award to Wade Trim Associates for construction And testing services, sorry.
So Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, adjustment, sorry, from account number listed in our packet, $1,245,849.93, and increase expenditures from the account listed in our packet, $1,245,849.93.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. In August 2021, Canton Township Engineering Services solicited public bids for six projects in the Heritage Park area. Three projects have been selected for construction in the 2022 construction season, Softball Northwest, Softball Northeast, and North Pavilion Lot, which are all located adjacent to Heritage Drive. On August 19, 2021, eight pavers submitted bids, which is in the attachment, and Al's Asphalt Paving was the low bid for all six projects collectively and for each project individually. The base bid from Al's Asphalt for the three selected projects is $1,070,808.50. ES recommends approval of a contract with Al's Asphalt for the Heritage Park paving projects in the amount of $1,070,808.50, with a 5% contingency of $53,540.43 for a total contract of $1,124,348.93. ES also recommends approval of a contract amendment with our engineer Wade Trim for construction, engineering, and testing in the amount of $121,500. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Just that this is a long time coming, and if anyone has been out in the parks and seen the parking lots, this is, they're a desperate need, and this is part of our overall CIP that was approved in 2019, and then I just want to remind you that there's two more resolutions on this as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any board comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the first motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award construction to Al's Asphalt Paving Company for the Heritage Park paving project in the amount of $1,070,808.50, with a 5% contingency of $53,540.43 for a total contract of $1,124,348.93 from the fund listed in our packet.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, I further move to award the contract extension to Wade Trim Associates for engineering surfaces on the Heritage Park paving projects in the amount of $121,500 from the account listed in our packet.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Item G3, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for barn replacement at Preservation Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize a supervisor to sign the intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for the replacement of the historic barn located in Preservation Park, and to authorize the Finance Department to make the necessary budget adjustments to the 2022 budget to record the Wayne County contribution and the related expenditures.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. Wayne County has agreed to fund the replacement of the barn at Preservation Park through the Wayne County Parks Village in the amount of $151,912 for the 2021-22 fiscal year. An intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton has been drafted for approval by both governing authorities. Director Holmberger, do you have anything to add?
No, this will be in addition to the funding that we'll get from the insurance settlement to help replace the barn that we lost at the park.
Great, thank you. Any board discussion, questions, or comments?
I'd just like to say that I know there are many people in the community who have been wondering about the barn, and so I think this is a good step forward to getting a replacement, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Could just echo what Trustee Berninski said. I know that a lot of people were very upset when the barn burned down, but I'm glad to see that we are putting something up.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we're taking the steps, but it's going to be, you know, it's not going to be up this summer. We're, if everything goes expeditiously, we potentially could be looking at summer of '23, but that would be if everything goes perfectly to plan. So we'll see if that is, comes to fruition or not. You know, supply chain and other things could very easily get in the way of that, so that would be the most optimistic forecast at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of people are asking, so thank you for that information. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great, that was the only motion on that one, right? Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comments, this is a time for public comment. We ask you to state your name, you have three minutes for public comment. This is not a question and answer period. We can answer your questions in the board comment section, or you can speak to us at the office, giving us a call. Okay, first, go ahead, please.
Mike Schultz, 544580 Dion Street. We don't have sidewalks. We've got a dirt road that, they don't plow the snow, they don't even grade it, but, oh, well, I realize times are tight. I would wish the township would take a little bit better attitude to the taxpayers, because all I see here is kind of a let-them-eat-cake attitude. I called about the telephone pole that was lashed down with rope. It took four months to get it fixed. Hey, I understand you've got more important things to do. Also, the potholes on Sheldon Road. I'm 70 years old. I don't know if I'll live long enough to see Sheldon from Palmer to Michigan Avenue fixed. I'm not sure. I know you guys collect millions of dollars for the roads. There are three or four cars that lost tires. They're parked there for two or three days, still no cold patch in it. The, you were talking about sidewalks, just north of the Middle Rouge River, they built the sidewalk that's two feet lower than the road. Every time it rains, it's two feet underwater. When it was being built, I said something. They go, our engineers have got this handled. Well, it's still two feet underwater every time it rains. It's not rocket science to do a job decent. You guys have got the money. When we get our taxes sent out on time, I pay my bill immediately, because I realize you guys need every cent that you get. Like I said, I just wish that you were a little more responsive to people that are conservative instead of liberal in this township. to people that are conservative instead of liberal in this township. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Here I get my three minutes here. I agree with that gentleman. For some time, there's been out there, you've had the police department between Michigan Avenue and Palmer Road. Cars have lost it. Things have got so bad, the township here or the county down the general area, Ford Road and Morton Taylor, down Sheldon Road, all the way from Michigan Avenue to Joy Road, you put barricades up, not the cones, barricades up, like wood for road construction. And they've been down two foot and it's in the hole there. Hey, I don't know what seems to be the problem. It surely would be a safety hazard. The police department's been out there, and it, you know, and they won't close it or do anything, or the county won't do anything on Sheldon Road because they don't feel it's a road hazard. I'd like to know what the protocol is for a road hazard or safety hazard, safety hazard. Next thing is, we got some paperwork on the dumps out there. Evidently, there's 22 tons of CO in the deal. It's below level, but there's other questions I raise to me. They have a leach aid system there. I'd like to know if those ponds are concrete. It doesn't say anything in talking to people about it. They don't know. Or if they got a liner in them, so that stuff doesn't leak out. You know? Next thing is, I'd like to know the copper roof. Evidently, there's not going to be any transport for old people to go to U of M or San Jose's. Seems like we spent a million dollars tonight. I'd like to know where some of this money's going. Copper roof. They got $300,000 homes out here. And I've talked to the building inspector. They can't afford, people won't put copper in it. They can't afford it. They can't afford copper in these $300,000 homes, and we got a copper roof here. I never did get what a copper roof compared to a regular roof, what the cost was and the lifespan of it. Lifespan should be, for copper, should be for 100 years. You know, maybe you could replace the tar roof or conventional roof on it three or four times to what you got in that copper roof. I don't know if that's been weighed. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? None in the audience? Looking for attendees for any public comments? I only see our employee, our MSD computer on, so I don't see any other attendees. Okay. Great. Let's start with some board comments. Our staff, do you have any comments? No? Okay. Board comments? We'll start with Kate.
I just wanted to wish everyone Happy International Women's Day.
Thank you. Diane?
Ditto. This is Women's History Month, along with March being Reading Month, so hopefully everybody's found a good book to read, and that's it.
That's true. Summer?
Ditto what Trustee Berninski said about International Women's Day and March is Reading Month. And I'm glad the sun is shining outside, and hopefully that means that spring is on the way.
March 20th. We're almost there. Thank you. So I'd like to comment on some of the comments that were made. So we did have a pole that the windstorm back, I think it was in June, the end of June, had blown, and DTE went up and tied it to the trees. Well, and speaking to DTE, DTE had moved their wires, and they did put up a new pole, but they could not remove the pole and replace it until the other vendors had also moved it, and that's what took so long. There was cable on there and other communications, and so DTE, that was their response. They said, "We have to wait until everybody moves their things off before we can remove that pole." So that's why they safely secured it, and that's why they took time, that they had to take their time to remove it. That's what happened with that. Oh, and, okay, just a second. One more thing. Again, with potholes, 1-888-Road Crew. We have Wayne County, we have a lot of requests in for them to fill potholes. They're doing it all over southeast Michigan. They are short-staffed like everybody else, but also because the weather has created a lot of havoc throughout southeastern Michigan, throughout Wayne County, they are working as fast as they can. We get assurances. I know Director Smith is on the phone with him all the time, and he does, his staff does input tickets to them. And so we know that that's ongoing, and that will be ongoing, unfortunately, through the spring season. We do have a robust construction schedule coming up for roads, but right now, all we can do is fill them. Jade, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, about what you're seeing?
Yeah. This has been one of the worst years that I've seen in recent history with potholes. We do see it every year this time of year, but it's with all of the freezing and thawing. It just, it creates a lot of havoc on the roads. So I do encourage people to call 1-888-Road Crew, which goes directly to the county. Put in a ticket number. If they feel like calling the township, they can call our offices at MSD Administration, and we are putting tickets in. And then we'll also call, especially if there's an emergency, please call right away so that we can get out there and we can actually address it. Unfortunately, yes, sometimes the only means that we have, because it is a county road, is to put a barricade up. But I think that the barricade does warn other drivers that there's a pothole, so go around it. And it does help deter some of the injuries to the cars. So just continue to communicate with us on a daily basis if you do see potholes out there, so we can get those addressed.
Madam Supervisor, can I just address this for a second? I want to say thank you for the barricades. I drive my son to Canton High School in the mornings, and it's, up until recently, it was very dark, so he could not see potholes in the road. But the barricades saved my tires a few times because I did not hit the potholes. So thank you very much for doing the barricades while we're waiting for Wayne County to fill the potholes. Thank you.
Exactly. And we ask, all of our employees are helping with that. Whenever they see anything, they report it. Again, 1-888-Road Crew. And please tell us if you see a deep pothole like that, because as Trustee Foster said, putting up a barricade is important because otherwise it will eat our tires. We also have, let me see, anything else on there? Oh, the copper roof. So that was approved by the board a couple of years ago, and information has been passed on to the young man about all the details of the copper roof. So if anyone is interested in that, let us know, and give us a call, and we can pass on the same details. But we have passed on that information a couple of times, and we will be glad to do that. I have one more question here. I'm sorry. Comment from Clerk Michael Seigris. For some reason, I'm having a hard time letting you speak, Michael. I don't know why.
Because I have the ability to speak anytime.
There you go. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm raising my hand for the citizens' public comment, so I apologize for not getting it up earlier than that. I think two points. My first is, and I, and I, I don't tend to enjoy crosstalk at public meetings, but I do think this time of year, every single year, we get a lot of comment about both potholes and the local road improvement program that the voters approved in 2018. And I think it's important that I speak up every single year and kind of reiterate the fact that the township was intentional in telling voters prior to the election that all of the money raised for the village would go toward road improvement and road reconstruction, but not to road maintenance. We did not want to divert any of that money to temporary road fixes, like filling potholes or cold patching. We were very direct in telling the voters prior to the election that it would stay kind of with concrete repair, with asphalt remilling, and things like that. And then we intentionally created a public committee of individuals, one of whom did not support the village publicly. So that would be previous supervisor Phil LaJoy, who was also Chair of Infrastructure and Transportation Committee when he was in the legislature. Additionally, previous township planner and Township State Representative Jim Castillo, and then Sunflower resident Khalil Kandah, and then myself and Trustee Foster are on that committee along with the supervisor and some internal folks. And we look at every project every single year. We'll be meeting in April to direct some of the five-year plan that we have implemented. I did see the improvement on Sheldon Road between Ford and Cherry Hill. That was probably one of the worst roads in Canton Township. And that does look great. I drove on it the other day, so I am grateful for that work. And we'll be doing some, I know this year we are intending on tackling the infamous Canton Center crater, crater-filled area. So I am appreciative of that program and just wanted to speak to that because it was brought up earlier. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that I believe this is the first time in Canton history where the entire quorum of the Board of Trustees is all women. And I think it's appropriate that it is on International Women's Day. So way to celebrate in myself and Trustee Snyderman's absence. For those of you who are wondering, I am currently at home with COVID and unable to physically attend the meeting. And unfortunately, the legislature does not allow for individuals to participate virtually through the Open Meetings Act that expired at the end of the year. So I am forced to sit at home and watch, just like everybody else. And I am very grateful to Treasurer Slavin's for stepping up and acting as secretary to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, this Saturday, in celebration of Women's History Month, is Canton is having Women International History March and with speakers. I believe Debbie Dingell will be there. Greg, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
That, I'm sorry. Put me on the spot there.
Sorry. Women's International Month we are having on Saturday through Leisure Services.
It's from 10 to 12 at the Heritage Park Amphitheater.
They're keeping things from you, Greg.
Laura Morier is running that.
Well, we're all going to be at a march.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm glad, Trustee Foster, that you have that information for me.[1727.22][1727.25][laughter]
Please give the details over.
So it's a Women and Girls March, Saturday, March 12, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. at Heritage Park Amphitheater. Looks like we have some pretty great speakers. And it's going to be Canton's first-ever, designed for the whole family. It's going to have music, speakers, activity stations, merchandise, and a story trail of powerhouse women throughout history, and a girl power fitness program before ending. So, sounds exciting.
Fun time.
Thank you. Trustee Foster. Anything else you'd like me to cover?
Oh, great. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Supervisor, I motion we adjourn.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now it's adjourned. Opposed, nay. Yeah.